We'll call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Roll call please.
Trustee Polly.
Trustee Laffin.
Here.
Clerk Palavich here.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Here.
Trustee Crawl.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. I'm moving forward to the agenda, is there anything to, well, we have everybody, so.
Yeah, we're adding.
We can add some.
The fire department appointment.
Okay.
Fire committee.
Fire committee. I will add that as new business item five and take five into six. With that addition, any corrections, additions, retractions, the ones that entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Most on the table to approve the amended agenda, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. This is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment online, please use the bottom taskbar under the ellipsis to either raise your hand or send a message so that we can identify your name and public comment. Seeing no public comment online, none in person, I'll move forward to the purpose of meeting. First item, similar scenario, of course, we have budget adjustments. As we inch towards end of the year, these are kind of closeouts of known expenditures and anticipation. Pretty much kind of self-explanatory, just about every department, general funds, public safety and water. Are there any questions to the amendments as presented?
I'll make a motion, we approve the budget adjustments.
We have a motion on the table to approve the budget adjustments as presented, is there support? Or it's been moved and supported. Further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call please.
Clerk Palavich, yes.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving into item number two, laptop quote from ten ten. It has not been purchased. I, I actually on their electronic quote added my name in a P O with the G L that this expenditure would come out of this year. This is for my, my laptop, which is the principal computer in-house and abroad that I utilize, coming into year seven, she's starting to give a couple little hiccups. So I, my recommendation is to move forward, this is basically the exact same laptop, I love it. But I would look for a motion to.
I'll make that motion.
For laptops.
And support by trustee Polly, further discussion. I did the math on six and, six years and seven months, it cost two hundred and fifty-six dollars a year for the laptop, so that's pretty good for a laptop. Uh, moving forward. Yes, please.
Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Uh, moving forward to the next item of business is the sale of the ambulance, obviously concurrent to state assessment and approval through the, the new rescues, how that process goes. But I, obviously you'll see that Chief Edmonds took this to Alpena County and to the city, and they would like to purchase it, this was a conversation. The last go wrong, we just didn't have any known time as to when our newer rescue vehicles are going to be there. And obviously concurrent to state certification of rescues. Um, it would be my recommendation to move forward with the, the sale of the ambulance to Alpena County and to the city for the emergency E L F units at a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, that would go back into the G L of fire department equipment village as a, back into revenue, correct?
The, the auditors do a special adjustment at the end of the year. So are we selling it to the city or the county?
In this aspect, I guess it's one and the same, I think it's the city.
I thought it'd be the county.
Yeah, what seemed to be, we'd probably have to sell it to the county, and the county for a dollar would probably gift it to the city, I would think.
And I don't know that internal mechanism. Yeah. The fact of the matter is, I, I look at that resource and I think that it is best served in our community. So.
My, my belief was that city gets a flat contract from out and out of that.
And I don't know, actually, we have Chief Edmonds. Connecting, we could ask that point of clarification to that process.
He said he.
Cause Anna sent you an email saying.
The city's buying, I don't know.
And I spoke with, um.
And we can ask.
Chief Edmonds, can you hear us, sir?
I sure can, how are you?
Uh, well, impeccable timing, sir, we're discussing the sale of the ambulance and a point of clarification, if you could. Uh, is the county purchasing the ambulance or the city?
So it's, it's under the county ambulance, so what generally happens is the city purchases it, purchases it initially and the county reimburses us for it as part of our ambulance purchase.
So we're selling it to the city of Alpena.
Yeah.
That would be then.
What the original cost of was, and then the original cost of the power cot?
Uh, I believe that the original cost of the ambulance was one hundred and sixty-two thousand and then the power cot was an additional.
Six thirty-two. Oh, is it that much?
Well, we bought two power cots, I think.
Sixteen thousand for one, for one.
Yeah.
So that's what I thought.
But the sale will not happen until we get.
Until we get, and, and in the discussion with the county public safety committee and Chief Edmonds, they're more than accepting of that fact, obviously, that nobody wants to leave us in any position of not having a response.
Terms of budget year, though, if we approve it now, whether the transactions made later, it would still be in this budget.
I, I guess then I've been CPAs of how.
I would add the.
An asset to an asset, I mean, from a balance sheet standpoint, but.
Right.
But.
So.
And then, and then the radio, tell me the.
Oh, the email in there, uh, we're keeping the hundred radio, it was just a request of the city that or identifying wires and how it was connected.
Oh, gotcha.
They remove it so that they know how theirs will have to go back in.
They'll be involved.
I was just gonna say, we're gonna, we're gonna be part of that so that we know how to plug it back into wherever we're gonna plug it back into.
That radio is gonna be transferred into one of the new rescue trucks, so we will not be looking up, but we will be taking it out. Their lieutenant or captain, Tim Sloss, is gonna be.
Okay.
Must take it out, so he knows where to plug it in on the radio.
Fair enough.
Their new radio.
You're looking for a motion, I'll, I'll make a motion that we proceed with the sale of the ambulance and power cot system to the appropriate parties. Whether that be the, the city of Alpena or the county of Alpena.
That would be the city.
City of.
City of Alpena.
Do we want to put an air upon receipt of our new rescue?
Yes, upon, yes, thank you.
So we have a motion, and it's been moved and moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
Two years.
We've, we purchased that, those ambulances, I believe in twenty eighteen?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right, very good, thank you.
Yeah, it's, I thought they were newer than, so. Uh, thank you very much for the point of clarifications, Chief Edmonds.
Thank, thank you very much, and we'll work with you guys as to when you want to pull it out of service, so there's, there's not a big rush for that. But I know Anna will look to process the payment and whatnot.
Okay, we'll move forward accordingly. Uh, next item of business is the south side renovation project. Uh, before you, you have a memo from Chief Hanson. This project had an over expenditure, so as you'll see, it's corrective action to make up the difference of nine hundred and forty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. And so, and this was also part of one of the budget adjustments in the packet previous.
Yes, correct.
So the amendments have been made, and so it's a recommendation to move forward with uh, moving and correcting the original motion, if you will. With a new project total cost of previously, the motion was very site-specific to seven thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and seventeen cents uh, to be amended to a project total cost of eight thousand one hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Is there a motion to that?
I'll make that motion.
A motion on the table to amend the, the motion of expenditure for the south side station.
Sound support.
And there's support, further discussion?
Other than to say it looks much, much better. Thank you.
Was it, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Oh, was it, was that all donated money, the eighty-one forty, is that all donated?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so that remained consistent, so. Hopefully, we will have all of our ducks in a row for next year's audit. So, uh, we have any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clerk Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crawl.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes.
And then fire department.
And then, yeah, the last item of business, Laura, would you like to?
Um, well, currently, I'm, I sit on the fire committee and um, I just took a position on our new Northeast Michigan commi- I'm sorry, Northeast Michigan Materials Management Authority Board as the secretary, which is a lot of extra work, and so I would like to remove myself from fire committee and Supervisor Skibby offered to take that seat.
Uh, committees don't really normally take board action, but obviously, let's just finalize the committee appointments as such, that Treasurer Ellery Summers is stepping down, Supervisor Skibby will take her position. And that's a recommendation from Laura, so I'd entertain, are you making that as a motion?
Sure, again, if you want a motion.
So, we have a motion on the table for a committee position replacement and appointment. Is there a support? A support, it's been moved and supported, further discussion.
Are you that already on it?
As an ex-official. But then henceforth, the, the principal error there is all of me. And unless there's an absence, as ex-official, I can always sit down in any committee. But if the, the allotment of three trustees is present, I can't truly be active, so.
So the committee now is, would be you and, and.
But the committees don't vote.
No.
No.
No. They only can only bring recommendations.
They bring recommendations, they mustn't. I assume.
So, we have a motion, may I have support for committee appointment of fire committee, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, aye. Um, moving into the principal purpose of this meeting, before you went through several iterations. Before you was a comprehensive, I do have the break out, at least in Excel form, and I'll, I'll give that to you guys, and it looks kind of discombobulated, cat is still kind of touching, massaging it, if you will, between the separation of the water and sewer into five ninety and five ninety-one. Thank you very much, Ellie. That's, that's a smooth transition. So I think that it would probably just be best served, because we do have time constraints to start on page one and work our way through. So we can have, stop at any point in time, we've gone through, really pretty much everything is remain consistent on page one. Uh, the only things that, really, I went back in after we got some documentation to fine-tune the workman's comp from Miss Brink went through and corrected some of those values. Uh, it was really the biggest correction in terms of work comp in any department was within the water department. And I may have, or the trustees now. So I may have. Discussions on page two?
Um, well, we talked about increasing the board of trustees per DM, so. Did we make any final decision on that?
I, I just transferred it over as the discussion was at twenty-five. Um, that was the last recommendation I had on my notes was to leave it as such.
At, at, I'm.
At twenty-five thousand dollars.
Right, but we, I thought we, what did we talk about, I need it for those resolutions. How much per DM, how much per meeting?
That was the last meeting, wasn't it, didn't we talk, or a couple meetings ago?
Yeah. Good point.
So there's an annual salary.
Yeah.
And then there's a half day and a full day.
Salary stipend on the meetings, right? It was an annual salary.
Right, what I don't, should have made stipend.
Well, uh. Oh, that would be a assumption, yeah.
This is what I wrote. Half day at seventy-five and a whole is one twenty-five.
And when we leave in the stipend, and then I wrote per month, per DM, a hundred and fifty. Do they get a hundred and fifty per month? They get a hundred.
I think it was gonna be increased to one fifty. That's what I have.
Yeah, meeting at what?
A half of the day or up to four hours, I think it is, right, seventy-five dollars.
Seventy-five dollars for a half day, a hundred and twenty-five for a full day, and a hundred and fifty dollar per DM.
Yes, that's what I.
Continuing.
And I don't know, I think we need to revisit the wage increases for elected officials. Cause I don't know if we ever came to an agreement on that.
We didn't.
We did not.
So.
So I'm up first. Let's have the conversation.
I could start a conversation.
Yeah, they all need to.
Um, I just, just personally, I feel that and since we're talking about the three of us. You know, we all were elected to do a job, and I feel that not one of our jobs is more important than the other or whatever, I mean, and I just feel that whatever the increase is, it should be the same across the board, and I did, and I'm skipping to the next page, cause that's where my salary was, but I'd sent you an email, made them to increase mine to fifty-two.
Yeah.
Fifty, but anyway, so that's just where I'm at, I just feel it should be the same increase for the three of us, whatever that is.
And I wholeheartedly disagree that all three positions are the same, or the responsibilities inherently are the same.
I disagree on that, that would also be then, all seven of us should get the same, cause we're all elected. So I don't.
Are you full-time?
No, but you said elected officials, or did you say?
I was talking about us three, I specifically said the three of us.
Yeah. I, I, I disagree with that.
So what is, what is a constructive way of moving forward, cause there will be some disagreement? Yes.
I, I just think it should be proportionate, cause you know, we're gonna be making a lot of cuts probably throughout this budget. Where we have, or we're asking certain departments to make cuts. I just think it should be proportionate, not that you guys, I think you guys deserve more money, don't get me wrong, but what is that amount? You know, what's appropriate, are, are we, what are we giving to our employees for an increase, and and what should we do for the three of you that work here every day?
Yes, Michelle.
I'm just concerned that we couldn't afford to give everybody a raise like this. And most people that work here deserve a decent size raise and are underpaid. I think a raise this large is hard for the township to afford. I think it could really kill morale around the township.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not saying you're not worth it, cause I do, I listen to you work every day, and I, and I know what you do, and. And what people do, I'm just concerned financially, we do not have the revenue, we have just decided to cut services in one department.
And we have.
And then to give a substantial raise like that
Yeah.
Just does not sit well with me, not that you're not worth it.
So, it just doesn't. That's the unfortunate sidebar, where do you stop? What services would I stop performing for the township, and then this township would have to hire a full-time person? It's, I understand both.
I, I feel like we need to find a better balance.
So, I, I'm all, I'm all ears, what is? You and I have discussed.
Yeah, this is nothing that I have not looked at each other before, so.
But.
Does anybody else have any ideas?
In many companies, municipalities, there's a, there's a step system, we don't really have a step type system here. And I know that those things should be commensurate with, with tasks. Um, I'm sure that if we brought up the responsibilities of a supervisor versus a responsibility of a clerk versus a responsibility of a treasurer, we're gonna find that there are definite differences between the three of those. Um, I, I do tend to agree that we are underpaying for certain jobs, certainly out of necessity, I guess, just financial necessity. But I do also think that we need to have some mechanism by which we can have increases that are, that are reasonable increases that don't that don't have any optical problems associated with them, and that don't create morale issues and those sorts of things, and so I would rather see us step this than to take one big step, sort of.
And, and I, I proposed this to the board before, and it was always, it's always been the same position. Now is not the right time, now is not the right time, and so I, I've sat back very cautiously and done my due diligence over the past seven years. Um, this is middle of the road, I've done my documentation, and so I, I, I hear everybody's position loud and clear.
I, I.
What does it look like then, because one, I, I do disagree with the, the first position that was stated at this table. There is an inherent difference in, in the three principal elected positions.
And I'm not gonna.
Imperity is not the way forward. Um, so, I, I'm, I'm all ears.
I, I'm like, I don't feel like I have to make exactly what Nathan's making, I'm not saying that. I'm not the one who deals with what he deals with every day, even when I had to hear him deal with this morning. I don't have to deal with that, so, yeah. I am concerned that this is such a huge increase at one time that it's very hard for the township to afford that.
Well, and before you, like I said, you have a, a comprehensive budget that is sixty-five thousand dollars in the black. But I, I look at what every other neighboring municipality has done, especially at the county level with raises. Uh, and that seemed to be right at the par level for administrative increases, and so where do we find that? I, I'm open for conversation, trustee Reiner.
I really have no problem with it. Uh, I don't think there's parody, I think Nathan I think the supervisor's position, let me put it that way, I'd like to keep the personalities out of it.
Yeah.
Uh, the, I think the position is a dual role at the supervisor level here, because we've become a charter township, so we've become something different than what we were, and the responsibilities are different at that position. I don't know that the responsibilities, somebody can prove it to me, I don't know that with being a charter township, there's responsibilities for the clerk or treasurer have, are different than they were before we were a charter township. But I know the supervisor position is, and I don't think it's been bought of in that way in terms of compensation, so I don't have a problem with it. Uh, I, I think it works from my point of view, and realize I came from private practice into public service, and, and, you know, we knew, for example uh, that we were underpaid in the prosecutor's office, but that parity has been caught up somewhat in this county, uh, and, and if you look at, you know, uh, the uh, people at the city and the people at the county level top-level staff, management, whatever you wanna call them. They're paid a lot more than that position is, the township supervisor, and I don't think they have to deal with the public as much with the issues that come in the door, um, so, and, and you know, sometimes, you know, not happy people either. Um, I think the treasurer's office probably gets some unhappy people, but I, I don't know, it's different than it ever was, but and I feel like I'm rambling right now, so I think I'll stop, but that's kind of where I'm at, is I'm, I'm accepting of the concept.
Trustee Polly.
Yes, when we became a charter township, we had the choice, and it comes up every time, then the supervisor, in this case, we gave the supervisor the right responsibilities of a superintendent. The charter says you must hire a superintendent or give those responsibilities to the supervisor. So all those responsibilities, I don't have a sheet in front of me, but we've gone through those before. Um, he becomes like, I don't know if I'm saying it right, the city has a city manager, but yet they still have a mayor. So they, they've hired, and they can also have, I believe, depends on their charter, but I think they can have a mayor that runs it just like a city manager, but so we've given the responsibilities to uh, the supervisor from the superintendent's position, and another case there would be in our fire department, we had a fire chief, um, which had pay, and then we hired Mr. Hanson, and his pay was way above everything else that we have even presently today. And to get somebody that's in, that's gonna run the fire department, and that, that issue just seemed like it came up, moved in and walked right along. So here we have a similar situation that is I, I guess I pretty well explained what I'm trying to say, and I'm sorry, I don't have that sheet of all listed duties supervisor.
I just kind of.
Definitely, definitely a difference.
Respond to Ross's statement about becoming a chartered township changed his responsibilities. But I also had my responsibilities as a clerk due to two major changes in election law in the last four years have increased greatly too. So it's not just becoming a charter township that needs to be taken, there's laws that have affected.
That's, that's why you were great to tell me that.
Right, so I just wanna make sure that's realized that we.
So.
Steve. What's that?
Your last one.
Yeah.
Well, as I said, I, I do believe that compensation is important. Uh, and I do believe that we need to do the best we can for the with, with the people's money, and so I it is a, a large increase, no question, percentage-wise. Value is there, I, I, you know, we do have a balanced budget, I, I'd like to be able to step it personally uh, so that, so that we don't have to take a bunch of flack with, you know, the whatever people are gonna say.
I'd be the one taking.
Oh, yeah, that, that's a fact, and so.
I think we'd all take.
Just eating up more time. Just eating up more time to discuss things that, that people don't have a concept as to the amount of time that it takes. So I don't know about the idea of having a, uh, like, cutting that. Um, by, by say. Second here. By but rounding that to a, to a, a number of sixty, but then we got to talk about the other, the other two as well. Uh, and so, um, I, I'm not necessarily one for equality. I had to, I had to do that in, in certain aspects of my life, but I don't think I necessarily have to do that here, because I don't think the parody is there. But um, I guess my thought would be to, to try to look at this as all three positions. And then, and then make a decision as to whether or not we want to look at an equal percentage of increase, or do we want to look at it? A dollar amount per, per position. Personally, I think I'd rather look at it per dollar position, uh, a, a dollar amount per position as opposed to a percentage. Uh, because.
Percentage always skews, yeah, I, I would agree.
Hmm.
Um, so. So stepping it to sixty?
Well, that's my, that's my, let me just do something real quick here.
And I think whatever, whatever we do, I think we have to look at the future too and say, what are we going to do?
Agree.
Three or three positions down the road, how are we going to build in step raises?
Well, uh, and exactly, so I, I, just outside of just being the manager, uh, I also am the zoning administrator. Um, I get to deal with uh the, the end consequence of our water and sewer origins with all of our customers and that. Um, it, it's multifaceted, I, I'm open for conversation, I don't disagree with some of the hesitation. Um, that's why I brought forward the documentation, because by per capita. And, and everything else included, uh, the state average is at eighty five thousand dollars. Um, I didn't shoot the moon, I, I brought forward what I thought was a realistic approach. But I'm also a realist, I, I know, I know that the, the fiscal fiduciary role and position of the township. We are in, as presented here today. In the black, when that's all funds accounted for.
So, you know, the unfortunate thing, uh, I've, I've talked about this before. Briefly, the, the unfortunate reality that we have in this business is that. We are, we are. Sort of hamstrung with, with revenue, that. We are reliant upon growth in order to achieve more revenue. And so, and so. It's, it's difficult to squeeze the proverbial blood out of a rock on, on some of these things. But we also know we, we have to. We have to work within our means, knowing that we have options. But uh, I would just as soon go to take this to sixty right now and, and frankly leave the other two as is.
You mean mine and Laura's?
Yep, and then to uh.
I'm comfortable with that.
All right, then, I'm giving you my shot, my thoughts, and then have uh next year have a. To avoid this conversation, to already pre-plan this for next year.
So, and this is a conversation I've brought up for past two years is. It is, it is what it is. Um, and so is it, maybe it's the best uh way out of these discussions and these timely uh delays in terms of a, a budget session. To actually appoint a compensation commission and take that responsibility away from this board. To make fair and accurate judgment of the three principal positions.
We've talked about doing that, and we, I don't have a problem with that.
So how does that work? I mean, like, if they come back with, say it is eighty five thousand?
Yeah.
Then, then what are we doing?
But I mean, so.
It's, it's a suggestion.
Um, if they did the.
So it doesn't take it hands out of the board, it, it just is a recommendation. From the planning.
I, I know for a fact that I brought forward full documented proof.
And who do we, how do we appoint people?
Uh, there's, there's a packet by the MTA. And we can go through that, it'd be board appointment.
I just want to ask a question.
Yes.
So, and I know you're, you do the zoning administration, but I believe about a year ago or however long ago it was. Weren't you training Mister Polly to do zoning?
Zoning enforcement.
So, I thought you were passing it all up to him at some point.
Because some of those are dispatchatory duties on your part, right?
So he does.
Zoning is a, zoning I do above and beyond, so, one, uh. I'm now educated, invested in zoning administration. Uh, currently taking a, a master's through uh MSU uh for master citizenry, citizenry, uh zoning administrator. Um. And so he does the building. Admin, like the. So there's a couple facets, so every building plan has to go through review as well. Site plan review and zoning administration are a couple different animals, but they, they, they are intertwined. So, uh, I am trying to, to get Kevin there and. Um, but.
How involved?
It, it's multifaceted. Um, and I deal with. Three a day, probably easily. Um, of random residents to seven point five million dollar commercial entities. Um, so. So getting this to keep this moving.
Last, uh, this year, you're not taking the stipend, right?
No.
What, what, was that three hundred?
If she was making the same as me last year, forty eight, five. So when I turned in my proposal for my budget, for my salary, I had put fifty thousand, because I just did a three percent increase, because that's what I. Thought that the union, you go, when during the union stop, I figured that that's what the employees were going to get. That's why I added three percent to mine, which gave me fifty thousand. But I feel that the clerk and I should at least make the same. And not one make more than the other, I mean, I have, I still do continuing education, I'm responsible for millions of dollars in tax revenue. And I mean, I feel like I go above and beyond in my job as well. I'm not saying they don't either, but I feel like we.
And I think there's, there's an inherent uh separation between uh the clerk and treasurer position. Um, and I, I, I still disagree with the parody uh scenario there. Um. I just simply disagree with that. But let's, moving for, I mean, are we even out of department one seven one, or are we gonna? We have.
So what, uh, so what are you looking at for this year?
Fifty two.
Fifty two, and Michelle, what were you looking at?
Well, I was looking at fifty two, but now I'm thinking I would like fifty three, five.
And then we.
So, and to Laura's point, Laura budgeted fifty thousand. She didn't send me an email until last week requesting parity at fifty two. There's no other documentation. Um, and so I, I left it as fifty as presented.
Um, even though I asked you to update it?
Yeah, because I honestly feel in my heart of hearts, Laura, that there is no comparison between the clerk and the treasurer position.
And what, why is that? I mean, I have my duties, Michelle has her duties, you have your duties.
Well, uh, yeah. It's, it's unfortunately, this is where a compensation commission comes into play, because this is not about personalities, this is about. Responsibilities and accountability, so.
Yes, trust. I think we need to get this year resolved, a compensation commission would start working on for next year. So we got to get these three positions resolved for this budget, because we only got a few days left. And then we can work forward.
Each salary of, of three of them could go either way.
Could, yep.
So I guess what do we think is, is reasonable here? We might as well look at all three at once. That's going to change all the numbers, right? Or, or maybe not.
I, I think, well, if, if I'm on a sliding scale at sixty, I see in my opinion, uh clerk at fifty five, treasurer at fifty. But that's, that's just me.
Well, thank you for giving me fifty five, but I do feel Laura should get more than fifty.
No, and so. We're, we're going to be.
I'm going to throw out, I'm just going to throw out some numbers, just let them stick to the wall, okay? And if they don't stick, now let's keep talking about it, because this really does, this is, this is such an inappropriate place to talk about this kind of stuff.
It is.
It, it just makes me crazy, so. It, it's very awkward and, and it's, and it's, it, it just is the wrong place to talk, talk about this sort of stuff. So going with what Michelle said, her thought of fifty three, five. Um, Nathan at sixty and uh, and the treasurer uh, by at fifty one thousand, and we'll see what happens there.
I feel Laura should get at least fifty two. Apparently they don't know what I do. I do know that there is a huge, there is a huge disconnect of the trustees of what actually goes on in this building daily.
I'm just looking.
I'm, I'm just saying that.
I, I'm simply looking at, 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 at numbers, I recognize that you guys are busy all day, I get that, I, I appreciate that. Uh, but uh, again, we don't have the ability to just arbitrarily add revenue.
Right.
And so, and so we have to figure out a solution to that.
So could you repeat those, Steve?
My suggestion was sixty for the supervisor, fifty three, five for the uh, uh. Clerk and fifty one for the treasurer.
I'm still going to repeat, I think Laura should be at fifty two.
The treasurer's position should be fifty two.
Correct.
Um. I, I, well, I, quite well taken, having been working elections, last couple of elections. The, the duties of the clerk have changed, uh, the complexity of it has changed, the, the. Uh, ballots coming in in the mail, that wasn't part of what the clerk's job was when, when you all started. Uh, so I see a difference because of that, and. And I think it might be more substantial than fifteen hundred dollars between. The new duties that the clerk had and the existing duties that the treasurer has, but. Maybe I'm missing something there too, so I haven't heard anybody say that there was any differences in what the duties of a treasurer are. I know that, uh, with the charity township, um, and, and the, what Norm said. Those duties have changed drastically, plus we have a, well, that's getting personalities in. But you haven't had a lot of prior knowledge of the workings of the township, which was a benefit to you being in that position, I would say. But I don't know if that's a criteria for crap compensation, but I would tell you this, that if. Someone like me who doesn't want to go and look in manhole covers and, and do zoning stuff and so on. Oh, was in that position, I'm not suggesting I ever want to repeat that, don't misunderstand that comment, but um. Uh, you know, you'd have to just it back down, because you'd need to hire a supervisor then, because I wouldn't do it.
Well, you can look at it.
A lot of people won't be able to do it, you know.
Well.
And I mean, to be honest, I mean, we could, we could probably have an ongoing additional hour of conversation.
Right, so.
And when it comes to it, I think the way out of this is to take this board completely out of it and move forward with a compensation commission. Uh, because.
Even for this budget year?
Oh, no, you can't right now, it's, it's, there's a timing mechanism where you. Uh, I, I have the, the packet from MTA, I brought it to this board two different times and it just fizzled out. Um, so.
I, I think we need to have that, it, it, again, this is, uh, this is, this is the wrong place to do this.
I hold on to the.
We are, we are throwing darts against the wall until one of us.
And it's going to be personalities, because what I presented is twenty thousand dollars under the state average for my duties and responsibilities, and I know that. I don't want it to, to persist. Um, and it's not about personalities, it's about the positions and what those positions actually accomplish and get done. Um. So we have, looking at concurrent, um, supervisor, clerk and treasurer's position from pages two to nineteen. Uh, where, where do we stand? Right now we have three numbers, sixty, fifty three, five and fifty one. Is there consensus to move forward?
I still want fifty two for Laura. That's my opinion.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah. And I think that you should have fifty five. So are you fine with that?
Okay with it.
Parody is, I, I have a horrible time with that, yes.
I just like to make one note, uh, I know of a clerk that's been a clerk for many years and she is not going to run again. Because of all the election issues.
There's a lot of.
There's a lot. Uh, I think that will be a.
There's a shortage of.
So then, are, are we in agreement to sixty, fifty five and fifty two and move up forward with our budget?
Yes.
I mean.
What about sixty, fifty five, fifty three?
I'm okay with that.
Fifty two. I, what, where do you stop? Because then I could come back, this is the slippery slope, fifty five was twenty thousand dollars under the average. And I mean, these are data points collected, given, verifiable. So, and I don't want to, I understand the big picture as well.
Do we know the average of the other two positions?
Um, by MTA standards, i- it's on their website. And currently it's, the complexity therein is the election changes in the, in the clerk's position. Um, but I have.
And the shortage of clerks.
And the shortage therein, I, I have the breakout if anybody wants to look at it.
Basically, what we've just talked about is a fifteen percent for the supervisor, a thirteen percent for the treasurer. Excuse me, uh, uh clerk and just shy of a ten percent on the uh treasurer. Because that would be.
Yeah.
Well above, uh, most, most, uh.
So what was the amount, so sixty?
Six, that was at sixty, fifty five and fifty two.
Part of the reason that I put that number in, just, just for food to thought, is in twenty sixteen, my predecessor's salary was sixty three thousand two hundred and thirty seven.
Including the, uh, what do you call that insurance thing?
And that wasn't for a full year though.
And, and that wasn't even a full year.
Well, we could talk about what Jean made too, and how much work she got, um, she was here.
She did it by herself.
She sat and let people.
Can we?
So anyways, I think that.
We're, we're literally be here all night.
Are we close to consensus, we think at this point?
I, I, I.
What is the consensus?
Sixty, fifty five, fifty two.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with it.
That is what you had asked.
We have got, obviously got to adjust all the other numbers.
Ancillary numbers, which I have all the, the data points to plug that in. So. So moving forward.
Well, I think we need to move back, did we, I didn't hear anybody talk about the appropriation, where is that?
What appropriation?
One oh one, nine nine five zero three zero and. I don't think there's any issue by nine nine five zero, of course, here, did we talk about that or not?
Are, are we, where are you at?
What, Adrian one?
Page two. Above where we started with this discussion.
Oh, public safety appropriation?
Well, we're going to get there.
So can we, uh.
We're going to back into that.
Finish this up and, and uh, I guess I would like to see then the commission or whatever have that, get that going.
I'll bring it up, I'll put all the documentation on the new agenda.
Because I think we need to get that rolling.
There's a timing, I, I can't remember if it's in November that it has to be appointed to, MTA has a whole layout.
Okay.
So I have no, no problem, I'll put that on the next agenda. Um, so yeah, to your point, uh, on page two, uh, there is a general fund of the contribution uh to public safety. Um, we'll get to that, I think, when we get to public safety as a whole, and work backwards to it. Um. But moving on to page four. Um.
Now, we're a review, are we keeping their wages the same? On page three.
That was.
I thought that was, no, that was planned, that was.
Um. I, I left it pretty much static.
Okay, so same as last year.
Yeah, um, because this year there's going to be a, a reduction in time. Oh.
You're, you're going to be combined.
There's going to be a greater efficiency.
Yeah.
Therein, um, so I would like to have this one whole year go through, um. Therein, um so I would like to have this one whole year go through, um we actually just met as as an organizational meeting was today. Um, so order review uh remains constant and as you'll see in this budget. Um, uh Department two-five-seven uh uh assessor. Uh this was a. Pretty much a reduction of everything else, by just the uh professional and contractual services uh that was bumped to three hundred thousand dollars. Um, to uh address any potential optics and costs uh for land valuations coming into this next year. Page five.
Bu- by the way, have have all of the, I noticed you mentioned, you you'd said earlier, there was a, an adjustment. Uh relative to uh workers' compensation through the fire department, I'm assuming that ran through the entire.
I I had a breakout from.
Janie gave us all the different codes.
We had all the codes.
And the net rates then.
No, she didn't. She didn't give us with credits.
Yeah, I don't know with that. That's all, that's the only thing I had to go by in terms of work comp calculations through this budget. So I I took the information that I had at hand and and ran with it. Um, elections, um.
We definitely will have one election in this fiscal year, the presidential primary. We could also have one in August and November too. I don't know. We will not have one in May, though.
Uh, building and grounds, um pretty much consistent across.
The work.
For you, Nate, we're on page five.
Okay.
Middle of the page, Department two-six-five.
All right, um, this is the year where I get the carpets cleaned. Did we? It's a big expense. They're pretty gross.
Considering the chocolate milk we pulled out of the moon the first time.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that we put an extra.
Which is nine nine one? That the nine thirty-one?
Grounds, yeah, it'd be nine three one zero zero zero. Um, we could.
Oh, I thought we did it out of janitorial services.
Hmm. Great. And and we probably actually did, um that would have been the activity that we saw in twenty twenty-one at eleven thousand.
Yes.
So if we were to move an additional three thousand. Um.
So eleven five?
And then we'd make that eleven-five, um and reduce three thousand out of uh nine-three-one maintenance and repair building.
I I'm sorry, we're, which code again, please?
Uh, to Department two-six-five, uh the first one that we're speaking of is two-six-five, seven-two-three, zero-zero-zero, oh, sorry. Eight-two-seven, second one down, janitorial services funded at eighty-five-hundred with an additional. Uh, three thousand and that three thousand will come out of the same uh department under GL two-six-five, nine-three-one, zero-zero-zero.
So that's going to eleven five and eleven. Okay.
And then twenty-five will be reduced to twenty-two. Good call on the carpet. Make a note there. Yeah, um, moving forward, um. Liquor law enforcement, uh we have a couple options there, uh one being internal, uh it's a discussion. Uh that the personnel committee's already had, uh as we get ready to enter into uh contract cycle. Um, so I don't want to get into that too much, but I will say in terms of Department two-six-five, uh I may have actually found us a part-time handyman. So.
So did we fund?
Well, not right now, because I don't, it that was actually funded through DPW.
Oh, okay.
Um, and I don't want to fund it until I know that he's vested, uh but that might be an option B for liquor law enforcement as well. Considering the fact that that's only two to three days a month, so we have some options.
Can I ask a question about law enforcement or liquor law enforcement? So you're saying that you're thinking of contracting that out?
We have two options. We are discussing it at uh personnel. Um, we already kind of had that initial conversation with uh Chad Carson. Um, otherwise, we if, depending on how that conversation goes, um, we have a potential outside. Person that could be a handyman when you look at three days a month.
So you're talking about the same person being?
It's a potential, I.
Why wouldn't we just have someone that we already employ that's here?
Option A, or that's what I just said.
I'm sorry to.
Because we're, we're going into contract negotiations and I don't really want to openly discuss.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure that there's at least a consideration of someone that is already here.
Yep, that was option. Um, moving forward on to page six of nineteen, um. Building inspector. In all, all salaries uh reflect, uh at this point in time, we don't know where it will end, uh but reflect a three percent increase from last year. Uh but we have not entered into contract negotiations. Um, building inspectors uh being as such, um. Principally, our our largest costs are all of contracts with subcontract providers and hopefully by signing. We're gonna actually have to align with uh Steve, Tim, Michelle, and myself, um maybe before the next meeting. Um, to kind of figure out the contract and the waiver scenario.
We just have some questions.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And what that will look like moving forward.
We kind of got a list of who we're sending it out to, but we have some questions.
All right, no, I'm happy to help.
Um.
So the the number there in, what is it, uh eight oh one?
Eight oh one is Kevin Pauli.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, you say there's three percent increase, so.
No, that does not go for subcontractors.
Okay, okay, got you.
Yep. And really then the mechanical plumbing and electrical um are all. Fluctuating, looking at histories uh to the best of our ability. Um, but we do actually, in looking at this, Department three-seven-two is not building inspector, it's electrical inspector. So that may have been. I just caught that myself. Uh, moving into Department four-four-six, highway, streets, and bridges, um.
But I'm sorry, let me just back up for just a second. On the, on whether it's the electrical inspector, mechanical inspector, or. Plumbing inspector. That's essentially. Uh, a fee for service, right? So I mean, if if they does. Five inspections, he gets X dollars if he does a hundred inspections.
He gets a percent.
That's what I'm, yeah, yeah.
So it's asked through another one.
Yes, yeah, so essentially, he's getting, so, okay.
So it should match like what our total for plumbing permits, what we've budgeted. We should have put eighty percent of that in here. Is that what we did?
Pretty certain.
Oh, and so that'll, that'll obviously fluctuate throughout the course of the year.
So it's after increased revenue, then it increases.
Got you.
Building departments are inherently a little odd as well.
Yeah.
They operate under Republic Act where any revenues in that department have to stay within that department.
Oh, okay.
So it's, unique thing, I I learned that lesson from Don Gilman a few years ago, I think, we've both shared that lesson plan.
We can't be taking money out of building department and putting it in to elections.
Not on like an enterprise fund.
Yeah, almost.
Pretty much, yes.
Any other questions under Departments three-seven-one through three-eight-six? Otherwise, the next department up is four-four-six, highway, streets, and bridges. Uh, have, I just put a placeholder at two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we know that our uh dust control has gone up, uh. To I believe thirty-two thousand and change.
That was my question, that includes the dust control?
This is dust control, um currently, the increase of the County Road Commission match is uh roughly a hundred, thirty-one thousand dollars, up twenty thousand from previous years at fifty-fifty match. So that puts us just between fifty-fifty match and dust control at roughly a hundred and sixty-five, hundred and sixty, hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
And when will they, when do you do your tour of the roads? Because right now would be a great time to go down Truckee.
Like I said, we can pay, we we can pay with and take.
Miles an hour will be your top speed.
We can pay and take sewer infrastructure right to your house.
Don't need sewer infrastructure, I just put in a new drain field.
Yeah, so uh I don't know, uh right now, uh they're just getting ready to move forward with uh weight restrictions. Uh, I think that they're busy putting up uh notifications currently. Um, and usually it's kind of towards the tail end.
So the remainder of that above one hundred and sixty-five thousand, where would that, where would that be allocated to go?
By whatever the project list, depending on, so every year we we I go out and they have a a set list of what they would like to see. And then I have to look at it and say, okay, what is, and and I've brought these to the board, um we've actually shot one down because.
Oh, it was Truckee Road.
Well, it was also.
I went out and drove it.
Truckee Road was.
One on Bloom, Bloom Road.
Yeah.
You go to mile down and then you go back.
Michelle and her husband ended up on private property looking at a hunting camp, uh yeah, that was Kirchhoff Road. Um, and so how do you justify, you know, a potential fifteen thousand dollar expenditure on a road that has two residents? Uh, when the principal degradation of said road is because of commercial activity of one private property owner's quarry. Um, so you always have to weigh, what are the traffic numbers? What is the greatest impact with such limited funds? That's why we as a township push for a road.
And actually, it didn't seem any, any worse than the road that I went. Off of Bloom Road, you know, I mean, they did, it didn't seem like it was that, in that big a trip.
And right now, it's a misnomer to even give calculation of what the road conditions are because they're all deplorable.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, that's this time.
Yeah, you have frost heaving, uh you have uh maintenance techniques that are starting to show um lack of gravel. You're getting into some roads uh on backsides that are starting to show corduroy uh from turn of the century uh initial builds. So you see.
So the answer to my question.
Is what they used to say, cedar and cut trees and literally lay.
Put the dirt in between them and on top of it, yeah, that's why you get these roads that go like this even, well, it was like that at one time.
Um, or corduroy.
Or or corduroy.
Uh, but the answer to my question then is that we may spend over their fifty percent match.
Please have.
Okay.
Because. That that that's gonna be another conversation for a potential village committee is, how how do we add potentially two hundred thousand dollars? How do you make up an eight as of last year's? Knowing what to get to average condition was eight million dollars in the rears. How do you at two hundred thousand dollars annually ever catch up, you know? Um, so.
So some blacktop roads end up being turned into cut uh. Travel roads and, you know, things like that, you know.
And then you have people that in neighborhoods that don't want to pursue a a special assessment. Uh, there's a lot of inherent complexity in there. We've been successful with special assessment districts for infrastructure and road infrastructure. Um, but I I entertained one potential, which was Maple Grove off of West Long Lake. Um, and it was going good, it was going fine until. The residents therein um only wanted exactly where the road was going to be. And the County Road Commission wants any new roads to be built to their standards, including ditches. So that's historically why Gush's Road Special Assessment has always failed. Uh, and that's always why Maple Grove has always failed, because they wanted, they want a new surface. But the County Road Commission won't let just a new surface. They want their shoulders, they want grades, they want ditching, et cetera, et cetera. Um. So we have it currently funded at two hundred thousand, uh moving on to Department six-oh-two, uh health and welfare.
Um, I I think we might want to adjust North Point Shores down because I've gotten more bills them, so their balance has lost them. But we can.
Okay, but they're gonna be bringing it forward into this upcoming fiscal and uptick.
Uh, yes.
We'll see in this upcoming.
If the special assessment goes through.
Would would potentially put it around sixty thousand.
You're right, yeah.
So it would be a potential uptick, I thought I actually.
So you have to change to line I'm saying for that, right?
No, that'd just be uh one-six-oh-two, eight-two-zero, zero, zero, zero.
I think that's in North Point Shores, you have a special revenue.
That's just money.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it is money and money.
Yeah, so that shows, actually, I think that's show on eleven.
I think, yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
That's on down.
Yeah, and I think I corrected it in the revenue side and I did not correct it in the expenditure.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, it's sixty thousand.
Sixty?
Yeah, so I I corrected it on the revenue side, I I brought it up.
I've gotten more bills since the number I gave you, so we can.
Okay, we'll find you.
Yeah, they're gonna pass you a special.
North Point's at six.
Yeah, that's what.
They're starting it again.
You don't know.
So they're gonna be bringing.
Same what they've been doing.
No, no.
Hundred.
So, so the revenue will go down fifty or sixty?
They're increasing.
Revenue's gonna go potentially, so they're gonna be bringing to our.
Percent increase.
Uh, they're currently, they're at four hundred dollars a parcel, uh they're looking at increasing that from four hundred dollars a parcel to six hundred dollars a parcel. Uh, so inherently, uh thirty-three percent.
So just, just a quick question, do we have an administrative fee?
Yes, I just, um, two percent, so it was two percent of the thirty-eight thousand. Of the seven hundred and some dollars that we take from them e- every year.
That would be twelve hundred, if they go with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so and then that gets used as dance floor, helping with that process, getting.
About two percent with the highest increase, oh, we can increase it at least one percent. I mean.
That's not.
It's a work.
Yeah.
It is.
That doesn't cover the portion.
Both of us.
So. Something that you give consideration when it comes before this board, what our admin function will be. And what they will be to says, Special Assessment District, success.
Their taxes.
Ah. Uh, but they have a lease, I believe that in proposals, they brought a, instead of a two-year term, which was. Uh, befuddling, can say the least, uh they brought forward a five-year.
Five-year.
Um, and have come to the realization that North Point Shores probably will never see blacktop. That's kind of, or unquote, um, so. Uh, moving forward on to page seven of nineteen, uh we're kind of cleaning up, um. Health and welfare, uh recycling, five thousand, um, South Bay, uh, three. Uh, that's what everybody's asked, besides the long wait was, um, they originally asked for ten.
A bit, uh was, uh then we changed it.
Then it went to five, and after further consideration, I I reduce that to three. But if if this board wants to, right now, we don't know what that expenditure is. Uh principally, it was for cleanup day, the the last conversation I had with Larry, um, that's probably not gonna be on the books.
No, they're trying to get some grants for the extension of the bypass and that's, they needed some buy-in from the.
But there.
So I'm gonna want five thousand on that.
Is there any discussion as to increasing it back to five? I was planning on going to their board, uh, April, after, actually, right around the end of April, when everybody's, the snowbirds per Larry's request were back.
Yeah, I think it's gonna end up being in May, because he, I think he changed, has changed.
Well, because I said, I'm not, you you posted on the twenty-eighth, and I said, I'm not in the office, I'm on a town on the twenty-eighth, and it's. Literally twelve seconds later, his email said, hey, let's just keep it the twenty. So then my rebuttal email said, I will not be in now. Um, so.
So.
We can, we can revisit, I mean, therein, all this budget is a living duck. I I can't trust that.
Right, no, I get it now.
And we have one recommendation to restore it to five thousand.
Has there been, he's requested five thousand.
He requested ten.
Ten, that's right, and so, but. But as far as the re, the grant is concerned, that, they're not, they're looking more for our. Not our financial buy-in per se, they're they're looking more for our just encouragement, I guess.
They're gonna need us, uh and they'll also need the rope commission uh buy-in, uh because the rope commission is the only one that can move forward with said grant.
So, so then, so then the three thousand dollars, the the original ten was for cleanup and just, or was just a. See if it'll stick to the wall number.
I I'm thinking of the latter.
Okay, and so, and so then the, over the course of the last couple of years, I don't, have we, have we? Is is, is this just a check we sent out or is this a reimbursement thing?
Uh, they have been actually bringing reimbursements, um. Not as fine too as some other organizations that we've funded, uh but we could work on developing that better.
We should have protocol on. If if it's, if we're essentially gifting money or granting money to people, they ought to, they ought to be able to have some accountability to it.
Well, and that's, that inherently, that's why I took a another little swing at that is because. What is, what is our inherent ROI then? If they're gonna be cutting out the cleanup portion of it, they're cutting out the flowers. Um, we've just past your blacktop, the bypass on all of twenty-three seven. Is it to leverage more grant dollars? Is it to leverage more grant dollars?
It's my understanding. And it seems to me. And I'm I'm just comparing it with the. One oh one, seven, five, four, eight, two, oh, two, you know, those are both the same ones now, the way you put it in here and I'm. I've always been a proponent on this board of. The greater benefit to the greater number of people is. Something on the mainland, not on something on an island. So, uh, to me, there should be a differential there too, but that's just an argument. That's not, that's just. That's not, that's what they're trying to do.
So then we have, we, Norm, yeah, sorry.
Well, I I you're, Russ, you're like the liaison to the South Bay quarter. For the board, you work with them. So I guess we need your input. To bring to the board. For what they're looking for is a. You tell us you're you're.
They felt, you know, they they made a ten thousand dollar request because they felt that that would be a sub, you know, an impressive buy in from the township. For what the improvements would be of, I think it's a million and some dollars to extend that bike path to. Uh, South Partridge Point. Nathan would like him to stop at North Partridge Point, but, uh, you know.
Meets the demand. Cause it meets the demand.
Well, no, we had people, well, anyway, we we had an in public input session. It was really quite positive from my point of view. And, uh, so, um. You know, they really do want to go to north, the north or south point, South Partridge.
Technically, I was just informed that there is no difference between north and south Partridge Point anymore.
Oh, yeah, well, it's. It's just now going to be Partridge Point. Yeah, how do you make a road that, well, they do it, they do it in Canada.
So trustee Reiner, you have a recommendation as liaison to put that back to five. I I will make that adjustment. Planning Commission. Um, this was.
Norm had suggested.
We talked about it.
Yeah, do you remember what they were on?
No, because it was just kind of like. Similar to the, uh. The trustees.
So it was actually. So we actually, what we actually by my notes came up with. Was at a hundred dollars flat. We discussed the same. The same as, uh, the board of trustees at. Seventy five dollars for a half day, a hundred and twenty five for a full day and a hundred dollar per diem. And. Her conversation that we went round and round.
One hundred dollars flat.
One hundred dollars flat per meeting. Um, and that is reflective.
And that's for the ZVA two.
Yeah. That's reflected in the number presented.
So a hundred dollars.
Whether it's five minutes.
Yeah, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna be busy, uh, and obviously then moving forward. Um, you'll see, um. Swings of it i- in terms of expenditures, getting ready for. Technically, as you'll see, uh, GL eight oh four, uh, zero, one, zero, uh, isn't funded. Uh, because we've already secured funding, uh, for that function. Uh, three thousand dollars, I just heard, uh, the other day from them, got that Opina County is on board. So that three thousand dollars actually may be less, that money could then be inherently transferred towards the master plan. Uh, and the concurrent work on the zoning works.
Sure, are we funding that line?
No, it is not. We've already by board action addressed it.
I think we've already paid it too.
Expediency. So, um. We've accounted for, uh, the increase in salary, uh, to the planning commission. Uh, and then I also accounted for previous board action and reduced the GL eight oh four, zero, one, zero rec plan update. Because we've already made that expenditure. And then going into seven, five, four, uh, nature, uh, preserve, uh, misery bay. Um, Thunder Bay Island, uh, and the rails to trails is just, uh, hopefully this will be the last cycle that we have to show that. Uh, we've already finally made that expenditure, uh, back in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Uh, getting it off of our books. Moving forward into. Um, the beginning of page eight and getting into. Revenue GLs. There's only five revenue streams in, uh, public safety. Um, and one of them is, uh, general fund contribution. I looked at this, um, as middle of the road. And. Moving into, um, the appropriations in terms of expenditure on page nine of nineteen. Went through it. And tried to. Obviously, we we don't know exactly, uh, what our direction is. But had time is of the essence and this is what I put together. Um, you'll see the proposals, uh, to the left that were brought for. Um, at a deficit of three hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. Putting it at technically at a deficit of roughly a hundred thousand dollars over budget, even within anticipation that, uh, last year's, uh. General fund contribution. So.
Is it even legal?
What?
We can't budget the deficit, can we?
No, you can when you have expenditures and it can show that the revenue came in in a prior year. Like we have to do with the equipment.
Will be, so once that gets funded as an expenditure, that's going to blow it out of whack as well. It'll look weird.
It will look like we had a deficit because of the equipment.
So the the hundred and thirty five thousand. It happens, this is. Would would be to that. Is there anything else?
Uh, potential sale, well, no, that's, that would be the only other sale that would be impactful to the millage. Because that was an expenditure through said millage and the revenues from the sale have to go back in. I don't know.
Equipment's not necessarily where you. It's the personnel budget part of the budget.
Yeah, and you can't use the equipment millage expenditures for it, so. So. I know that this was slated to go to the fire committee. And obviously, due to illness, that meeting was canceled. And looking at what our truncated timeline is. Move forward with what's presented today.
Can I ask a question? You said we were before we changed the numbers here, but. But you said we were. Sixty five thousand.
Right now.
Are we sixty five thousand in black with the three hundred and twenty one thousand or?
With a a general fund contribution of what, one ninety eight?
Just shot it to.
Just shy of two hundred thousand. We have sixty five thousand as all principal departments are in the black. Sixty five. As you'll see on the very last page, uh, sixty five thousand, two hundred and seventy one dollars.
And that is with a with a, uh.
That is including the general fund contribution to the public safety.
So then the fire department would be in the black with that contribution.
Correct.
Not the three twenty one.
Last, last page.
So. So in other words.
Our emergency fund if the furnaces go out and we so.
So we're funding that three twenty. Out of some other place.
We're funding public safety out of general.
Well, for a hundred ninety nine or a hundred ninety.
But you've cut other expenses.
I've cut other expenses.
But you've got, you're showing here a deficit of three twenty one. That's where I'm confused. How can you show three twenty one with the hundred and ninety eight?
You have to look at the other column. That was the proposed. You have to look at the. So the recommended is at a zero.
Is that a balanced?
Within eight hundred and sixty nine, there we go.
So.
So that's what revenue is and.
Could you go over that again way slower? Am I going to have any opportunity for a fire department, a discussion on this budget that I never had a chance to prepare?
Well, you've had chances to prepare.
Oh, I've prepared them, but this is totally new to me this afternoon, ten minutes before.
Understand.
Okay.
And it's not a position of the fire committee to do with the fire department budget. We're here today because we have thirteen days before this has to be legally posted. And I didn't know when we were going to get it.
Okay, I see some, I see some grave, uh, errors in here as far as I'm concerned. Uh, last year, just on fuel alone, I originally requested twenty thousand dollars for fuel. You budgeted twelve thousand. Three months into the year, we did a ten thousand dollar fuel adjustment. To give us twenty two thousand in that column. I think that's way underfunded.
So let me have a rebuttal. Uh, what are we doing? Ninety five percent of our calls are medical. And we're going to be responding in F one fifties.
Well, I I agree that it's going to come down, but prices, the fuel are going up. I'm just, I'm just trying to point out some major things that I've seen right off the bat. Give me the numbers. So.
Two oh eight, three, three, six, eight, six, dot, zero, two, oh. Gas and oil EMS nine one one.
And then, uh.
But what, what would you recommend, Mark, in there?
Well, I mean, I originally proposed twenty thousand, I believe, um. I I think we need to get higher than the ten for sure, uh, fifteen probably. Would be a start.
I think that's reasonable.
Now, let me ask you a question. If. I forget the calculations here somewhere.
So then this is, and by all means, if there's corrective GLs.
I'm just seeing, I mean, all in all, it's not terrible. I'm just seeing some things.
I took middle of the ground and trying to find some reason.
I would just, I would just throw some concerns at maintenance repair to building. It's two oh five, three, three, six, nine, three, one. I know we're in need of four new garage doors. I know we've replaced some. Uh, but we have basically the hinges are just falling off these doors.
So to that, great, but my my position is if you, if we're increasing gas, EMS nine one one from ten to five. Where's that five thousand going to come from? Cause that's the ebb and flow of budgeting. Right now, this department is at a balanced budget.
That that is the question. I'm just merely pointing out things to you that I think that need to be taken care of. Uh, I don't know where that money is going to come from. Let me give you a little fun fact. In twenty seventeen, the township's general fund contributed nine hundred and twenty two thousand, uh, some odd dollars to the. With the, uh, fire department budget with no mileage.
What year was that?
Twenty seventeen.
You guys.
Before I got here.
Yeah.
So the approved budget was nine twenty two, two ninety one prior, uh, and now we're, we're going back in time.
Yeah, we. Where did you have this number?
It's on the, it's on the approved budget sheet. I have. Approved budgets in my department out there. Previous budgets.
From the fire department or the general ledger?
Well, since they're in the fire department, can, but I would assume this.
That's not in a B S and A format, so that's henceforth why I ask, is that what they wanted? Because that would also encompass the non-emergency transport when you had an average salary of a firefighter that was eighty thousand dollars.
I don't know, it's it's not a B S A format, but this is the approved, so it says in that column.
And in twenty seventeen, it was B S and A, so I'd have to extrapolate and run a general ledger report, but I would disagree.
I guess, I guess my point is. The problem with that, ju- just so you understand something, the problem with that non-emergency transport. Of that nine hundred and some thousand dollar budget or whatever, whatever it was. There was, there was a significant write off. From that. I I understand that, but I also want to point out that seven hundred and sixty three thousand, three hundred and eighty six dollars roughly. It comes out of my budget that I can't control. That's wages, uh, healthcare, all the different things. There's no control under that. From my, from my standpoint of budgeting. So I just want to point out, there's just some things that, you know, we have turnout gear. I brought it to the fire committee here, uh, last time. I've got a list of different expenditures, just just for replacing, uh, gear that's outdated. Uh, it's ten thousand, three hundred and thirty six dollars. Uh, we talked about.
But a G, I mean, cause if you want to do this constructively, let's go GLs.
I'm sorry.
But Michelle.
I I'm just saying, we have an equipment mileage. And that is. Equipment. I'm not sure why we're not using the equipment mileage. For.
I guess that's the decision we have to make. We have a nineteen eighty nine tanker. Uh, we don't have enough money in the equipment mileage fund at this point in time. To afford a new tanker, where I'm currently looking into used options. They're not, they're not easy to come by. Uh, only based on, you know, Nathan and my concert conversation about trying to go for a use, you know.
Yeah, because we can't, if it's called living within our means, uh. I have, I I can't. To to going back to historical purposes. It it does no good for where we're at today. We, as a board, decided to stop a private business by utilizing tax dollars, which unto itself is illegal. So that number is not in correlation to where we stand currently. And so let's look at what is presented here because. This wasn't presented here. When would we have actually gotten a budget that was balanced or realistic? And so, Michelle, you had something to say?
Well, my thought is we have the secret mileage money. And I guess we have to prioritize what we want. I mean, to me, the safety of having the right protective gear is the most important thing. To have our guys and gals out there safe. But currently, I would like to see the equipment mileage money used to make sure they're safe.
That is one hundred percent correct on your part, but I also want to keep in mind that if we lose our tanker. Our, we lose points off our ISO rating and people's insurance rates will go up.
And but we also.
There's not necessarily enough proof to support that, and even if that was the case, it would be at least a year. Well, there is proof in that, that's the ISA study that was done. I I I get it and and I, I mean. I I. I I I completely understand what you're saying. The biggest problem, as as I've said to this board. Earlier. Is that we only have so much revenue. If we don't have other sources of revenue. Then we can't make purchases. It it really, it's kind of that simple, you know. I'm basically putting this out as an open discussion to the board because I just want you to hear it from me. The board has the decision to do whatever they're going to do. But I want it to be on record that these are things that that I've pointed out to the board. It would be easier for me, and I presume others on the board, if we went. Down this this budget instead of sort of bouncing around. You're absolutely correct. I probably should have done that. So starting right off at the top with chief salary. Uh, I originally put in for a thousand dollar raise, which is about a one and a half percent raise. And I too agree with the rest of this board that I don't think, uh, talking about salaries and stuff in that. Is something that should be conducted during this time. I think there ought to be a process in place about making proper, uh, assumptions on raise. Now, Nathan mentioned state average for his position. I don't disagree that his average is probably that ca- uh, case. But I will tell you that my state average at twenty five percent of the salaries in the state of Michigan, the chiefs currently make eighty three thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars. I just took this off the web. Fifty percent of that median population makes ninety thousand, seven, eighty nine. And another seventy five percent of those folks make over a hundred and four thousand. So when you, when you talk to correlation of duties, I agree with you and go on that way. And I, you know, Nathan had, uh. Read this budget and I see it was reduced, uh, my original request for the thousand dollar or one and a half percent raise. Basically for cost of living.
I have to go through this, Mark, because you presented this board with a three hundred and twenty one thousand dollar over budget.
Keep in mind, I didn't present that. That's something that's been assumed for the last several years. There's been a two hundred and forty thousand dollar contribution from the general fund.
No, what you did present was five hundred, where we started was egregiously beyond just the two hundred and forty thousand dollar mark.
I I do believe that's inaccurate statement. It it honestly, it doesn't matter. We we just have to continue to operate. With within this, within the numbers that we have, but we we just can't. The 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 money tree died. And the the people have spoken. Uh, let's go down to salary payable, three, three, six, seven, oh, two. When I proposed my original budget based off last year's numbers, I increased the potential of three percent for employee, uh, for full time staff. I I see you reduced in your recommended recommendation down to three hundred thousand. I just wonder if that's going to be enough to, uh, to take that. I just wonder if that's gonna be enough to, uh, to take that, uh. That raise on, if that was the case. And that's, and that's not up to me, cause that's a contractual thing. I'm just wanting to make sure that we, we see it as such. I'll move along. I had done all the math on all the employer, social securities, Medicare, all that stuff, based on what the numbers I received from Nathan. Uh, originally, when I put those formulas together.
So on the paid on call, I feel like we kind of skipped over that one.
Oh, yeah. Um, we're gonna be nip and tuck. I think we'll be really close, close with that forty.
Because we were, we're only at like twenty-six right now.
Right.
For the year.
And let it be, so.
But.
The position therein was that, in your thought of raising it to forty-four was, you would give a raise. You can actually give paid-on-call raises under the same ceiling.
Additionally, I am planning that we're going to be having paid-on-call assist with hose testing. Cause we cannot expect our full-time guys to pull off hose by themselves and get it rewound. So that's gonna be an ex- expense of probably three weekends of the four to six people. We have fifteen thousand foot of hose. We can test four at a time. The company that we had did twenty plus.
Yes, Norm.
I think we got a bit of a issue here that we must present a balanced budget by the end of the month, correct?
It's in our, it's imperative. As any, I think, at any municipal, yes, as Michelle stated, the only time that you have a variance from a balanced budget. If there's expenditures coming in that didn't meet the revenues at the current fiscal.
If you had collected it in a previous, and put it like in a savings, and it's sitting there waiting to be.
What I'm, what I'm thinking here is, this is a. A balanced budget, which is here. Okay, this will get us over that hump, that we can start looking, what do we have to do after that?
And I do not disagree with that, Norm. I'm just going through the line. I'm giving my suggestions back to this board.
So, so then maybe this is where you give your suggestions to the next fire committee, because.
Well, that was the idea.
But the fire committee doesn't do the budget.
I understand, but it was three sets of eyes or four sets of eyes looking at something instead of one.
So, so just for me to step in here, because I, I, I had to, I couldn't make the meeting. And so, uh. The, the plan was, was to look at the budget as, as closely as we could, knowing that ours was just going to be. Sort of pushing it forward and hopefully, hopefully the board would have a work, but we're also, uh, going to be looking at. Not necessarily the status quo. Uh, the, the, the problem with status quo, once again, I'll, uh, sound like a broken record. If, if we can't support the status quo, then we have to change the formula.
So by status quo, are you meaning how we staff the stations, how our shifts, um, that, that's what you mean, like just look at.
Look at everything.
Like it's brand new, just.
Yeah, so, so if.
Labor's our biggest cost at the township.
Of course.
Every.
And so, and that's typically gonna be the case with almost any organization.
And that's whether you have a fire department or your contract went out, there's still gonna be a staffing issue.
Whether you have a restaurant or a, or a fast food place.
So, so I, I think where we're at, and I don't mean to, to energize.
But that's my, that was my, that was my.
Trusty Foley presented this. As it stands right now, dollar to dollar, cent for cent, this is a balanced budget. Is it perfect? No, but budgets are living documents as well. We can, we can adopt this budget and make amendments.
I'm just.
First meeting.
I'm merely pointing out the obvious to me, to this board. Uh, you know, Cash and I talked about this in depth about what we were gonna talk about at the fire committee meeting. What we needed to get out of this budget. And we'd have to, we know that we have to, we do something.
I guess, I, when you say like what you have to get out of this budget, I guess I need clarification.
What we have to reduce it to.
Okay.
Basically, right, Cash? I mean.
And so I, I grabbed that proverbial bull by the horns because time is of the essence. And I said. I'm, I'm looking at this in a very fair manner. Obviously, the general fund has to contribute, have a, a contribution. That is a debatable position as well. It's been a position since twenty sixteen to reduce that dependence. But nonetheless, I looked at this and you actually said it was pretty fair.
We'll look it over.
So we have a balanced budget. My suggestion is, make all your notes next to the recommendations. And then we can take it to the committee and say, because if, if you're gonna bump one thing.
They're already done. Let's say, you know.
Wonderful. But, you know, I, I, I didn't have to be affordable, the aspect of time to wait until it was done. We need to do this in a timely manner so that we can get it posted by legal standards and published.
Yep. I'm, I'm willing to keep going down this quickly, cause I know this has been long and drug up, drug up for anybody.
Let me ask a question before you do that. Um, those notes that you made alongside you showed us, have you calculated those out?
Yeah.
And, and what's the end result?
Well, these are actually numbers, uh, so this top column up here on your spreadsheet is all numbers that. Basically, I can't change that's employee, social security, medic, all the different stuff.
What's about?
Uh, well, s- the, the, the cost that I can't do anything about in the fire department budget.
I, I don't think that's what trustee Ryan are asking. With your, with your notes that you, or what Steve did ask. The notes that you've just compiled, is it a plus negative or is it, did you do an ebb and flow? I want five thousand here, but I took five thousand there.
I did not total down the columns. I wanted to do that at the fire committee meeting.
All right, that's fair. Uh, I, I, I thought maybe you were just sort of making those notes as we were, as we were.
Basically, what I was doing is I want, first I wanted to establish, what can I control? I can't control any of this. So these are the things that I wanted to see what the total dollars were. And I was able to come up with that figure and it was pretty shocking, actually.
Well, why don't, why don't we, uh, why don't we just convene a meeting at what, Monday, right?
Yeah, we have.
Same ridiculous hour of the morning?
Uh, I, that's what I put it as, because.
And we can move it.
Okay, I'll send the note up.
Well, so I thi- I honestly, I think that in the interest of time, uh, that that, that that might be worthwhile, because I, we sadly, we're, we're spending. Uh, time on certain things that I don't know that we, we all necessarily have a complete grasp on. Uh, about how if we take something here, we gotta take something here.
We gotta do this, we, we gotta get this done.
Yeah, and so.
And to, to that point, even what the works and the labors of whatever comes out of fire committee. If, if it's not implemented into a recommended budget, it would be an amendment going into the beginning of the fiscal.
Well, and maybe we can come up with some other alternatives or ideas to.
So I do have a couple of questions to the board, though, and then I'm gonna be done. Uh, Nathan prepared this. I had prepared one that was gonna go to the fire committee, uh. We'll compare notes then. I mean, I understand the purpose of having to get the balanced budget approved, cause you only have so many days. But my question, and I threw it at Nathan this morning, uh, and I'm going down the list here quite a ways. Uh, and I threw it at Cash, uh, shared public safety expenses, two oh five, three, three, six, nine, six, nine. Uh. What exactly is that? And what does it cover?
That covers the heat, the electricity, the phones, internet. Um, just the general.
Over.
Overhead of the fire station.
That's what I thought it was, but I was getting screamed at the moment.
So now the, above that, that was a hundred and seven thousand.
So, yeah, what, what we basically, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, last year, we, we didn't pay the rent.
So it's just a proportion of the actual expenses we pay now, because they get charged them.
So I understand that.
It's a journal entry.
General fund.
It, and it's actually, yes, general fund pays for all that. You guys do not write a check back to the general fund.
So up above that, then, just to, that answers that part. We still have heat and electricity. South side, okay. That's, that's what I wanted to make sure. Um. And one other quick question, this is bouncing back, sorry, about snow plowing. Um. Let me get the line item, two oh five, three, three, six, nine, five, seven, zero, one, zero. Um, we're kind of all over the board on that. Uh, is the eight thousand, uh, Na- Nathan proposed for this budget. Is that just for our fire stations or is that encompass the whole township driveway?
It's just your stations. We get a different bill for this side of the building.
Okay, wasn't sure.
Because they.
Always. Wanted to know. Uh, I'm gonna have questions at the fire committee meeting. I'm not gonna stand here any longer, take up your time. I gotta go to a chief's meeting for training for the county. Uh, so if I can be excused, I'd like to be able to do that as well.
Thank you. I, I do have a quick question on the, on the, uh, potential sale of the ambulance. Now, we know that it, that is. Well, we don't know that. It's likely to take place in the next fiscal year, right?
Yeah, I, by all, because the accounted by motion is that we would not release it until we had replacement deal.
No.
But then Chief Edmonds also noted that it sounded like Anna was willing to cut a check. I, I don't know how that looks like.
Well, she just sent, she wanted an invoice.
Yeah.
And we didn't even. Well, usually I do the invoices.
So.
But anyway, my question is, is. That hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars would end up in the revenue stream. Of the fire department under fire equipment mileage, correct?
Yes and no.
Yes and no. It's, we can only use it to buy fire equipment.
No, I understand.
But they do, if they have this deferred income, the auditors do this end-of-year journal entry to show it.
It's a weird.
So, so I'm wondering.
So you did, I mean, we still can show it as an expense.
Yeah, you made it, you made a comment that I thought was a, a very valid question as to why are we not? If we're gonna buy turnout gear or equipment and those sorts of things, why are we not taking it out of the equipment fund? Well. Uh. Part of Mark's comment was that if, if we keep taking money out of the equipment mileage fund, then we won't be able to buy this, uh, uh, future fire tanker. Uh. But I just, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. The process well enough. So under five, two oh five, four oh three, the fire equipment mileage. Would there be a dollar amount in there?
It goes into the assets.
It's a balance sheet.
It's a balance sheet. It goes into the assets.
Okay.
So we will be debiting one, a current asset account. I'm not sure which one. And.
We're converting a, 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 a real.
Is it deferred revenue?
Piece of equipment into an asset. And I don't know how we've got it valued. It might actually end up showing, we show it in the, on the balance sheet now. Couple hundred thousand, it's gonna change to a hundred and thirty-five left in that balance sheet.
So then on the, on the equipment.
Spender's side.
Yeah, so then on, on the, on the expenditure side.
This is.
This move though as a transfer, a journal entry.
So it would, it would be a, it would be a zero net.
It's a liquid asset that we can spend, but it's not necessarily gonna show as revenue.
Right, I, I, I get it.
After we sell that, I have a spreadsheet that shows exact, well, I have not gotten the exact amount that you collected on the equipment mileage this year. I'll get that from Laura and I will update my spreadsheet. And I have a list of everything we have purchased with that money. I will add in the sale of this ambulance and then we will have three hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Wow.
But let me finish, but what I'm, what I'm wondering.
Okay.
And maybe I'm just being a cerebral pigmy. So if we, if we buy turnout gear or any other equipment. From the mileage fund. Why would it have to show up? This is a money in, money out, right? This is, this is money that is coming off, off the balance sheet. And converting to an asset.
We will still show it as an ex- mileage, equipment expense, whatever that GL number is.
But I understand what you're saying. I don't know that you do.
We do. And then the auditors do adjustments.
To the revenue side.
To, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's.
And so, so this, this is, in effect, this is, this is in effect, a, a. An expense that will be adjusted by journal entry.
Yeah, year-end journal entry.
Yeah, so it can increase our.
So we want to, it won't, it won't, it'll, it'll deplete our cash position, but it'll increase our asset list. Effectively.
Correct.
Right.
All right, so, so.
Changing one asset, you're changing cash for some.
Right, right. And I, and I'm just wanting to make sure that, that. Those sorts of eligible purchases are understood that, that. They, they might not. It doesn't look as bad, I guess, as, as I'm, as I'm trying. How, how I wanna say.
Look at the public safety.
Yep.
I take the number out of whatever the equipment mileage purchases is.
Three, six, nine, seven, six, zero, zero, zero.
Because that I know is separate. We've already collected all that money in a previous fiscal year. I can account for every dime when the auditors ask.
Gotcha.
So, so we can have a negative. Position because of the equipment mileage, because we can justify where that money has come from.
Well, that's what you said earlier. And so, and so I just wanted to try to get it.
This is something they take a fly, they take a pad and go over this equipment mileage.
I'm sure they do. And it's no differently than the conversation that I've had CPA relative to those journal entries. Uh, it, it is a, there, there's no money that exchanges hands per se. It's, it's simply. Taking a certain percentage out of this department, a certain percentage out of this department and plugging it into BSNA. And, and everything's, everything.
Right, we don't get a check wrong.
That's why I said in the past, no different than the twenty-five thousand dollar fire hydrant rental.
Yeah.
Which was, it was just a number. It, it didn't, there was no money coming in for that. And there was no difference of any money coming in, uh, for these journal entries, you know. Literally, uh, it was just, it was just a paper transfer.
Right, so we can show exactly what the department.
Right, I, yeah.
When we got it, when we spent.
Okay, no, I'm, uh.
They're different, it goes, then it has to be broken up that way.
And so I want to be able to, uh, at fire committee, I, I, it's important, I think.
Well, and the number that I told the last fire committee at three hundred fifty-six thousand dollars is exactly that.
Yeah, so, and so we know. Um, we know painfully well right now that, that. As I said earlier, the status quo is something that until such time as we have an opportunity to do something.
Well, and that's what maybe on the, will probably be on the next agenda for our next principal meeting is, uh, uh, the potential conversation of bringing in a consultant. But trustee Foley, you've kind of been sinister.
Well, but speaking of, when we gonna have another meeting? Can we schedule that?
Our, our next meeting is the twenty-seventh. If we conclude here.
And we gonna need another meeting before that twenty?
The budget?
Yes, absolutely, because.
Why?
Why?
Cause I ain't voting on this budget the way it is. I'll tell you that.
What don't you like about it, Ross?
I don't like the general funded, uh, two hundred thousand dollars going out of the general fund. I won't vote for that budget. So, uh, you know, that's, I'm just, I know I'm gonna be in the minority, but I'll tell you, we're doing the same thing. We've always done and they're hoping for a better result. And, and, uh, uh, we've, you know, this happens every year. And, uh, we have other places appropriately to spend. That two hundred thousand, we shouldn't be, we're not being fair to our taxpayers. And I go back to the contract. If we can do better service through a contract. Why are we beating our heads against the wall on this fire department? Come on, folks. I mean, it's now about, back then, it was about a third of the budget for the fire department that we could have contracted it for. And I've been told that I'm short-sighted on that, but frankly, I think we're being short-sighted when we keep trying to beat our heads against the wall on this thing. Well, I won't support that budget with that two hundred thousand going to the fire department.
Well, and let me rephrase this, because I've had to say it to Chief Hanson, and I'll say it to this board again. This budget is a living duck. Uh, there's, there's conversations that ebb and flow around that exact same thing, trustee Ryan. And that's why I was just stating that on our next agenda, uh, like it, love it, or hate it, uh, there are consulting. That we can actually populate and set metrics and benchmarks. I, not that I think that it's a, uh, the greatest use, but. We have a division in topics and pursuits on, on this board. And why not put together as a board, a parameter, uh, for and pick, uh, put out for R O P. Or however that consists and actually design something and have professionals say, this is your demographic, this is your, your revenue. This is your demographic, this is your your revenue streams. These are all the options on the table. This is the best option for you.
The only option I see other than contract is for the service at a lower price than. Cost than what the village is for the fire department is to either reduce services or do a contract. And to me, that's not being responsible to the taxpayer citizens who require the protection. We can give them better protection when we give them now with this budget. With much less money. We don't know how much less now, because we rejected it before, but. And and there's been an unwillingness to go back and talk to them about it. And so I think we're we've got a eight or nine month budget to run the department as it is. And so what are we gonna do eight or nine months from now? Just kick it down the road till then and then try to make a decision under pressure? That's not my way to do it.
When's the when's the next?
Our our next regular scheduled meeting is on the twenty-seventh.
And before that, we would have the budget hearing.
Yeah, that was, we haven't already scheduled that.
Well, we would start at five thirty for the budget hearings.
Well, I guess it goes back to the plan, so.
And I feel like we haven't received any options.
We have.
I feel like we've asked for them and we have not received different options.
We had a handwritten thing last meeting.
I guess in my mind, options would show what the structure looks like, what the cost would be.
Those cons.
Pros, cons. I mean.
So so to that.
When is the next fire committee meeting?
Monday, it sounds like Monday at eight.
I mean, Monday at eight.
Because this is, this is a topic that I I brought to, uh, several trustees of, if we can't identify a way forward. Um, and we don't, we haven't had one presented to us, then. How can we get out of our way to best serve our our constituents?
Have you talked to any of these?
I have not, because I I literally didn't want to dip the the pen in any ache, so to speak, because. I want us as a congealed board to set the parameters and what those discussions look like and who we're gonna pursue.
How many options do you have?
Right now, you've provided me the one, uh, I had just, I reached out to that very first one. Um, and I will reach out to three or four, and then we as a board is for consulting.
On consulting.
So you at least have two to start.
Um, but I think depending on what that cost is, I know historically this conversation popped up and we didn't err to go that direction because of cost. Well, here we are, to your point, did we just kick the can down the road? It would certainly seem like it to some extent. And so how best to look at it fairly, because there's obviously a a passionate argument on both sides. Then do have. A company that is professional can look at all things in as neutral of a position as possible, looking at a revenue net position. Our demographics, et cetera, et cetera, and say, this is the best approach, and maybe that may be. Hey, you need to, you need to go for a mileage. I know that there's been a conversation, speaking of millages. I'll say it at this table. I'm not in support of pushing a mileage without a vote of the people. That is a conversation that's popped up.
That's a commitment.
I I.
Fire words have made since we've been a chair of council, they won't do it.
So that being said, a creative solution to get ourselves out of our own way, so to speak. Is to potentially utilize ARPA monies. And have a neutral consultant come in, look at all the variables from one end of the spectrum to the next and say. This is the way forward. Give us a, give us a roadmap. Cause we have not found, we are unfortunately right in the exact same position. And part of me agrees with you, Russ, but part of me also looks at it from a realistic position of. Right now, we have to to put the next foot in front of the other, without any options on the table. Those conversations can be forthcoming, but right now there are no conversations that have been had.
There's gotta be. To get my vote, and I don't see, I don't think you probably need to, but to get my vote for this budget, you need to have. Some sort of string like that attached to it.
And I don't know what it looks like. To to answer Laura's question, I have not had any personal communications other than the one email that I sent out and. Uh, he, the the one gentleman from that company sent me back an email and I said, this is literally going to the board.
So we have no idea how long it would take.
We don't, there's a lot of barriers that we don't. And I must go here. So. I don't know.
What did you say?
But I'd say that, uh, to do that, probably six months to a year.
Can't be a year.
I mean.
Why would it take that long?
There's a lot of work and a lot, and and not only waiting for us to come to the door. I'm sure they're doing it. It takes steps and look at the last time they did that two thousand and seven, that wasn't an overnight deal.
Not so, doesn't happen. So if nothing else, we can hear. From an entity that that is their principal function.
Yes.
And the least, the the one, Laura, you you sent me the one. I have no problem ascertaining. A third and a potential fourth and have them. Put together a generic proposal and we can fine tune it as a board. These are demographics, these are our revenue streams. This is our interest, whatever they need and say. What are our options? Whether it's on one end of the spectrum of a contract, on the other end of a change in formation.
But how can you even talk about an option of a contract unless you approach?
And at this point in time, it was a majority of the boards will not to have that conversation. So, and I'm not getting into that, but the fact of the matter is. We need to have a very broad stroke and we have to step out of the box to have a realistic. So I don't know what it looks like. It could be a change in formation. I agree. I don't wanna have a reduction in services to meet said costs. So what are the, what are those pros and cons? Everything has a pro and a con. I'm, I know one thing from my position, I'm not in a rush to make the next bad decision. So that therein can go on the the next agenda. And we can do it together as a board and say, here's what we would like. It's not just, it's not a fire committee. This is a board of trustees. As a unified front saying, here's our data.
Well, we're not unified. I mean, that's not.
Well, but you know what? Our knees are under the same table, and if we work together to find a solution.
Well, we we speak as a majority. I mean, the board speaks by.
And that is how it is, but at the same time, we all have valid inputs.
But is there any more thing more to say? I mean, we have, you know.
At this point in time, it really isn't because there's. We don't have any internal options brought forward. We have a disagreement in how we as a board should move forward. And if we use an an independent intermediary, that that is their professional ability to look at all sides and say. These are your three best options moving forward. Then we need to listen. I I don't know what else to do. I mean, I I can agree on both sides.
Well, he's asking for more money than you've put in the budget, so you're already, you know.
But we don't, I'm not making that assumption either. He made some notes. I don't know if he, he's, he is correct. I put, he got this today. Because I literally did it yesterday. Because we need to have as coherent and a balanced budget as possible. That was not brought forward in any timely manner. So as supervisor, what am I to do?
You did what you had to do.
I took the recommendations and I said, this is a way forward for now. In middle of the road, I'm not trying to go the one end or the another. It is.
I just wanna say, we do start our budget in November. We all turn our budget in. And start working on it in November. So this is not like.
This wasn't last week.
Yeah. We all have.
Every department had got the same email. At the end of October, please submit your.
Yeah, we had two weeks to get it to you, because you have to submit it to the state by November.
Yeah, because I have to, I have to ghost write for city, village, township revenue share. That's where the budget starts with me. I have to make. Yes.
But the last. Budget I saw, we worked on, had no money put in place for fire department. And then when I come in today, I see that there's allocations for two hundred grand, so I. That was kind of a a shock to me that there was nothing. Now there's this, but I'm 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 reading through it, but. That's another adjustment that I think we need to, uh. I'll look at and maybe the fire committee will come up with a recommendation. Yeah, just like Steve said, you only got so much money, you gave the cut services or you get more money, so.
So. And we need to find a roadmap of how to move, because repeating.
Well, there's a third option.
But by all means, no. We've, you know.
Well, we're already voted that down.
Well. The future is untold. And. The last thing I wanna do is have a debate at this table of what happened in the past. We can learn from it as we should. But how do we move forward? And we can do it together. If we let go of anything that we're holding on to and think about what we should be thinking about, how can we with the dollars that we have generated by mileage? Give our citizenry the best services possible, period. And if that's unpleasing to some, it's unpleasing to some, but facts are facts and. We need to hear from somebody that's not sitting at this board. And not here, because we need to find a direction for it, because. It is the definition of insanity of just doing the exact same thing and expecting a different result. And that is.
Doing it for years.
So we shall overcome.
I can.
So, so to that point, let's go back to. I mean. I don't see where we're gonna have any more productivity in terms of a budget, having a another special budget meeting between now and the twenty-seven. Would you agree or disagree? I mean, you can vote the way that you want, but we can always come back to it if we know that we're gonna be accomplishing.
Well, but to me, that's kicking the can. And so my problem is if we don't attach something else to it, such as what you're suggesting. We're gonna be nine months down the road and we're gonna be the same place, but we won't have any money left to budget, to fund that budget.
I I don't disagree.
And I don't want to be in that place.
I I I don't think anybody does, but I don't see that we're gonna have anything greater more. Uh, so than what we are towards the end of this meeting, of which we still have the enterprise fund, of which, uh, I'll send you the breakouts. Kath and I have to tweak right now. This is showing a deficit of twenty-nine thousand, but I know where I my keystroke error was. So that.
Was that was a clerical then?
That was this guy, yeah, because going separating it out from five nine two to five nine zero and five nine one. In Excel spreadsheet.
I may have to reconsider my support of salary thing.
So it's splitting it out is not an easy task, uh, and so Kath pointed out my error and I'm pointing it out too. Because I am also human, um, and so we'll show that nine. No, by no means, unless of, less of, I got one in open accounting. But that being said. I don't, I don't think that we're gonna accomplish that and find a conclusion. I think that if on the next agenda, we have. Some options of consulting services. And we're serious as a municipality of how to find a better way. Then that would, I would hope that's, those are strings enough, sir. But at that point, is there any other discussion?
So tentatively, we will not have another meeting until the twenty-seventh unless.
Twenty-seventh, and right now we have it scheduled for the budget, uh, portion to be, uh, starting at five thirty.
Last year took twenty minutes.
Took twenty minutes.
Cause I forgot that it was started, but.
Yeah, you you came in, uh. Remember correctly, sir. Um, so we will be starting that at five thirty, concluding the budget, and then we'll go into our our annual meeting. I may have to leave early on that evening immediately following, so.
Be passing out resolutions for everyone to read.
Yeah, all right. So this is, if there's no other discussion to the the recommended budget as presented, I will, I will make, well, no, we're not that, are you? What are you, what are you making? Actually following, uh, our agenda. Um, so this is the second opportunity for public comment.
For a change, I got.
Uh, say no public comment, uh, further discussion amongst the board. I will correct every change that we discussed today. And and email, uh, the last recommended budget that then will be on display.
Okay.
Um, by legal standard, uh, yet this week, uh, so we'll meet that. It will be advertised, I believe, on the twentieth. Uh, meeting that standard.
By at least by the twentieth, it's gotta be.
So and then we will conclude, uh, all budget, uh, going into the twenty-seventh.
It's just a note, I got the whole budget. If people wanna see it, they can go to the website or.
So there will be a copy that's always held in the clerk's department, and she'll have that as well, so for public inspection. Uh, but with that being said, if there's no other discussion for good of the order, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to adjourn. Is there support?
Or.
We have a motion to and support to adjourn further discussion. Saying none, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose the same, reading it at six oh seven PM. Thank you very much.